The mission of Big Wall and our local schools to inspire and guide each student to their maximum potential. I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, would you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Alright, we're gonna call a little audible and move recognitions up. Is Andrea Stewart here with us today? Come on up. It's right up front here on the year round. Good morning. Is there a presentation in physics this morning? Well, you have been honored as a high school student, so I've got some kind of work to do. Andy Stewart is a senior at Big Wall High School. She's the daughter of Tricia John Stewart, currently serving in the Army. Her older brother Austin is a sophomore at Ohio State University. Your younger brother Sam attends Big Wall High School. After graduation, Andy plans to study psychology. He's passionate about science behind mental health. She currently serves as the president of the MAPH Honors Society. She acts as co-president of the ECO Club to educate other than how to use her part to build a more sustainable life. Because if we could corrupt the problem, she would wake up herself. Live more of a sustainable life, but also make people aware of the environmental issues around the world. She carries a 4.3 grade point average in sales in her honors class who will participate in multiple sports. She recently wrapped up an amazing OCC championship volleyball season and is moving right into basketball. Would you take like two to three hours off? Some staff member observations about Andy. She's one of the best attitudes I've ever seen. She's always positive, helps others, and is someone you can count on. She humbly serves in multiple leadership roles. Yes, she quietly leads, which I find to be a challenge. Which I find to be a challenge. She has earned the respect of her peers and teachers alike. Andy's from a military family, which means on top of all other stresses of high school, Andy carries extra stress in having long deployments in years of safety while being of her family overseas. However, she carries this extra stress with poison charity. As a freshman, she was a hard worker. However, as a senior, she coupled her work ethic with positive energy and leadership. And enthusiasm for life is contagious. So for those reasons, and I'm sure many others not stated here, I would like to congratulate you. Being Andy Stewart of the local high school. And then one more parting gift. For safe travel. You're welcome. And then happy to take your pictures kind of out here in the lobby and then come back and get your all the others to go on.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Alright, then I think that floats us back super attention board.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, um, I'm gonna jump into a couple announcements there. First one, um, just wanna talk about board meeting dates for next year. Getting some feedback, um, specifically Sherry I thought had a good idea, which was a blend of the two schedules that we suggested last time. So there is an attachment there in your agenda. And looking at in January, still having obviously the organizational and morning meeting there. School the evening meeting, February a morning meeting. We thought that was good timing in terms of this with new board members coming on and having some time to do some work there. So we wanted to take a little more time. See, um, but then looking at March, April, and May with just evening meetings. Um, as we get into to spring there and things are a little more hectic. In June, we have, I think, the last couple of years with Jeremy's, um, end of year business that needs to happen with appropriations. Um, we've kind of flip flopped again, the evening and morning meetings. So looking at that June 28th as the morning meeting and the June 16th, which would be the normal week for the evening meeting. July one meeting and again looking at kind of summer vacations and a lot of people are out around that time anyway. August, just the evening meeting. We're trying to get school started there. And then once school settled in for the year, um, throwing in a morning meeting for September and November for some work time. And then looking at just evening meetings in those other three months. So open to any feedback on that, um, either right now or between now and what we put up for January and for your approval of organizational meeting. If anybody has any immediate thoughts or if you wanna kind of think about that, let us know. If they don't hear anything, this is what we'll plan on proposing for January 30. And looking at with the construction wrapping up, those morning meetings be more of a time to, um, kind of back to what we used to do, just a little more time for discussion and to dive into some topics. So what I feel like will rush, obviously if we have things that need to be acted on, things come up, emergency issues, whatever, we will. But looking at those as more of, um, time for us to discuss topics and dive into things a little deeper.
I, uh, I think the organizational needs to be on January the 6th. Statute requires it's first 15 days of the month. And to go 13 days, I think is a little bit long. Just to have the organizational. We don't have to have a business.
Are you suggesting to do just the organizational on the 6th and then the evening meeting on the 20th? Or would you still want a morning meeting on the 13th as well?
Uh, that, I think that the board can decide that in the organizational.
What just, kind of what you're thinking this week, kind of what you're proposing? So how's we're planning resolution things, which is kind of nice to have my ideas and that's the.
Well, you can leave the schedule the same as what it is on here. Uh, which would include business meeting on the 13th. I would just separate it from the business meeting, make the organizational on the 6th. And I believe that we probably should have some wording in there. Uh, to add meetings later if necessary. There's, did you find anything, Jeremy, on that?
I have not found anything.
Uh, under 33, 13.12. It sets the number of meetings maximum. And my problem is that this verbiage here probably needs to be set now instead of have the organizational to include. Uh, some verbiage that allows for the change in the schedule for either additional meetings or not.
So are you saying that gives like an opportunity to schedule additional ones and they're not special meetings at that point? Or what's the, not all on?
Well, under, under that statute, it limits, uh, to 40 meetings a year. And you've got 20 some here. If they're not on this. My concern is that if they're not encompassed in this, this calendar. Uh, OSBA states that there's an Attorney General opinion, which I haven't been able to locate, that you can't have additional meetings with pay. So under the verbiage of the ORC 33, 13.12, I think there needs to be something here that leaves the option to the new board.
Just a line on the bottom of the calendar.
Yeah, I discussed it with Jeremy. That's all I have with it.
And that would allow up to 40 or you're saying more than?
Yeah. The, the statute allows up to 40. But if you, my concern is that if we set the dates here under OSBA's statement, technically we can't add meetings and be reimbursed for. Has to do with an elected board and self enrichment.
We can double check with OSBA.
Adding a meeting on the 6th is going to be a struggle for me, uh, work wise. I don't honestly know that I can manage that. I mean, with the holidays and then just jumping back in. I've been planning on the 13th and 20th.
And then, if I wasn't clear, that would be an evening meeting, not a morning.
Even in the mo- even in the morning time for an evening meeting, I'll be in another state. As one of five, I recognize that certainly the meeting can proceed without me, but, uh, certainly thinking about seven. I'll be returning that day.
Uh, yeah, the, the morning again is going to be a struggle.
On the seventh concluded?
Double.
Help, help me if revised code allows us 15 days in our meeting scheduled for the 13th. Uh, is there something of urgency that needs to occur before the 13th?
No.
So.
But then again, we don't know if there's something urgent tomorrow.
Correct, but having it scheduled.
And if we haven't organized, we can't even hold a special meeting.
Or if we have, correct. Well, then by, in theory, I mean, doing it on the first would make the most sense, but.
I'm open for the first.
I'm, I'm probably nine. My apologies to our community if they feel like I'm letting them down on that. But I recognize the sixth as the first Thursday and I, I respect the idea that you were attempting to keep it on the Thursday there. My only wonder is relative to, uh, what we have done historically. At least in terms of having the organizational meeting at the sixth and, or the second Thursday and the third Thursday for typical board meetings, I've already scheduled around that. So the idea of doing something beyond earlier than unless there's a pressing need to. Obviously, if there was an emergency kind of conversation that needed to occur, we would look at that and I would try to adjust in order to attend. However, having planned, and we're talking about four weeks from today. And, uh, certainly my day job has other requirements.
I, I would throw up on the school standpoint as well, um, with opening the new high school on Tuesday the 4th. I anticipate it a week from now, it'll get a little crazy tomorrow and certainly we'll just have to board one.
And again, not that, I mean, I recognize that the opportunity exists to have a meeting minus one board member. So I'm trying to signal that.
Well, on the 6th, it would be two. Is your schedule any easier on the 5th?
Again, I'm, I'm happy to make my schedule.
My work schedule is not going to be easy.
Yeah, again, I'm happy to make my work schedule fit with my board requirements. I'm not at all trying to get out of anything. I'm just saying, is there anything that you anticipate of such pressing need that occurred before the 13th? If revised code allows us till the 15th in order to do something.
I know.
Which is the world we've operated in for at least two years since I've been on the board.
No, we've had a standing board here.
Correct.
Quick call special.
Correct.
We won't have a quorum until the organizational, 13 days into the new year.
Okay.
Just a point I thought I'd bring up.
Anything else on the calendar?
Alright, um, next item I just wanted to remind everyone, we're excited to welcome the community to the new high school and also with an opportunity to tour the prairie run on December 16th, which is a week from today. So that's super exciting. Four o'clock, the stadium will be open if you wanna see it during daylight. And then five o'clock for the ceremony and tour to follow. And because of that, just a reminder, we are moving our meeting for the board to seven o'clock at night to get a little extra time.
And the location of that meeting?
Is going to be here.
Okay.
We tried to look at doing it over there, but, um, just some concerns with the technology and streaming. Not feeling very secure about what's going on there yet. Okay, um, with that, we'll move into our academic achievement and there she is, um, Mrs. Clark, who as a reminder to the board, uh, is not only one of our directors of academic achievement, but she's also covering as the principal of the ELC, um, since that's a smaller building. So I know that spreads her a little thin. We appreciate her work there. And she's actually here in that capacity today. So you're used to hearing from her, uh, as an academic director. Today she's gonna share some information about our early learning center, which houses our preschoolers.
Good morning, everybody, and I'm just gonna apologize because I've only had one sip of coffee so far, so bear with me. It doesn't matter how early I get up, I just, that, that BWI car line. Um, so today, um, just as Andy mentioned, focusing on the early learning center. Um, so the first thing I just wanna do is a quick little update on, um, just some celebrations. The first item is just, I really wanna give our staff members a shout out over there. Um, as you know, this, the, um, sub shortage, uh, is, is a real thing. And every day, um, you know, it's, it's rare that we have coverage for all of our staff members. So I just appreciate their help in, um, chipping in and covering. And, um, I know that it's, you know, it's hard, it's definitely hard on them. But every day they show up with a smile and they're there for our kiddos. So I really appreciate all the staff. Um, Erin Curtis and Katie Jaeger, who also help, um, with keeping things going over there. Um, an academic update when it comes to the early learning center. Um, just for those of you who have heard, um, I know Kate and I have mentioned data teams that we do throughout the elementary buildings. Um, we are doing our early learning center data team on this Friday, tomorrow. Wow. Um, so we'll look at all of the beginning of the year data and we'll compare it to the mid-year data and see what kind of supports we need to do for our kiddos there. Um, and when I say supports, yes, academic, but also, you know, um, social emotional. Obviously, that's a big year for that growth. Um, we also implemented this last month. Um, we purchased a BASS kit for the early learning center, which is a, a benchmark assessment system, which is what we use at the elementary, um, buildings in order to gauge what reading level a student is at. Um, and what we've noticed the last couple of years, um, is that our kiddos, some of our kiddos are coming in as readers. So how are we going to personalize their instruction as preschoolers? So we're really working with teachers on deciding, not all kids, obviously it's not development to be appropriate for all kids, but what kids can we start to get a book in their hands? So we're, we're gonna be really looking at that, um, tomorrow when we look at our data. Um, another celebration, our PTO purchased our staff, each classroom, a little spot of emotions box set. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but they're little, um, they're eight books that each book focuses on an emotion and they come with like a little spot plush animal that, um, is aligned with that emotion so that the teachers can do some activities with identifying that emotion. And, um, so it's, the teachers are loving it. It's, it's really great. Um, and I actually have some pictures in my slideshow. Um, the other celebration is I wanna thank, uh, Alan Frank's class at the high school and his students created a natural playground for the early learning center, um, in his wood shop class. And it's really cool. The kids love it. Natural, um, checkerboard. Um, so it's really cool. So I also have some pictures of that. Um, so one of the focus today was just kind of to, um, talk a little bit about the Eagle profile and how, um, all of these skills, adaptable learner, collaborator, communicator, problem solver, responsible citizen. All of those skills start to preschool. Um, it might not look the same as it does in a fourth grade classroom, but that's where the foundation is set, so. Um, so here's just a few pictures of collaborator. Um, if you look over there to the picture on the left, that's some kiddos working together at the natural playground that our high schoolers made for our kiddos. Um, every day the teachers are, whether it's a structured center or a free choice type of center, they do a nice job of incorporating play so that they can, um, experience the, the, um, importance of collaboration with peers naturally. Communicator. So if you see the picture on the left and the picture on the right, those two students are working, um, with some of the, um, center activities that are aligned with the, uh, look spots, sorry, it's my coffee, lack of coffee is coming in. The little spots emotion books that I spoke about. Um, and I put these pictures, we put these pictures under communicator because it's important for our kiddos to be able to communicate their feelings and be able to say, um, you know, how they're feeling and, and how to regulate that emotion. So I, we, we put that into the communicator because that's a super important piece.
And then at preschool level, that's a huge piece of what our teachers do is getting kids, um, ready for academics by being able to control their emotions.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm, absolutely. Um, the picture in the middle is probably one of my favorite pictures. I was in, uh, Lauren Martyr's classroom doing an observation. They were doing our mor- morning meeting, which is, comes from responsive classroom, which we do in all of our elementary buildings. And they were greeting each other and one of the things that they were working on was walking up to the student and greeting the student, but making eye contact. And I thought that was so, that's so important. I mean, I even talked to my seventh grader about, don't forget to make eye contact when you're speaking to somebody. That's a really important piece of communicating. So I love that, um, they're already working on that and supporting kids in that important skill. Responsible citizens. So you have a picture on the left with our kiddos working in their, one of their stations, um, with a little mini town. I think there's a fire station there, a police station. They do a whole unit on community helpers and, um, how that ties into being a responsible citizen. And then of course we have our, um, visit from the local fire department and letting the kiddos tour the truck and ask questions. It was a great day. Um, just to start with talking about a responsible citizen and how, how we all contribute to the community in a positive way. And then we have problem solver. Um, you have again kids working together to solve puzzles, Legos. Um, you have two kiddos in the middle working on a scavenger hunt together. Um, to, you know, it's like kind of a little bit of a competition, but not too much of a competition where we're gonna have meltdowns. Um, so it was, you know, all of these things happen again in preschool. So it's nice to see that we're working consistently on the same skills all the way up through, um, high school. And this, um, adaptable learner. So this was kind of hard to find because I wanted to find pictures. Um, so I was thinking, gosh, what, what an opportunity to adapt when you have to, um, learn from home versus being in school. But then that was weird trying to find pictures of kids at home learning. So anyways, um, I, I was going through the pictures and the one in the middle is a little guy who's at the pumpkin patch. And that day rained like crazy, but they had the best time. So I thought, well, what a great experience. You just, you know what? There's nothing we can do. We can't control the weather. So we just are gonna have to adapt to it. Um, the picture on the left, they were working on their five senses. So, um, this was interesting because I was in a couple of classrooms for this activity. And it's funny, this, um, kiddos that have sensory, they don't want weird things touching their feet, right? So the teachers are trying to, you know, tell them that this is just helping you to, um, understand and apply, um, you know, one of your senses. And so they were able to kind of overcome that and adapt to it and they all had a great time. So that's really my update. It's, it's a great place to be, um, anytime things get stressful. Going over there, it all goes away. So, yep, any questions?
We're found, grounding the presentation in the profile of the Eagle. I think that's probably important to share in terms of almost a callback to pre-pandemic, pre kind of COVID times. The work that was done and being able to draw the through line from preschool to what a student might be or aspire to be when they graduate. Appreciate that. Thank you.
And I will add to, um, we just had waiver day. Um, the Monday after Thanksgiving where students, um, were not in session and our teachers came in for PD. And one of the things that we did preschool all the way up to 12th grade was really worked on those skills. And what does that look like in a preschool classroom? What does that look like in a second grade classroom? And then how are we gonna give feedback to those kiddos? So that was, um, we had really great discussions and conversations around that.
Thank you. I wanna reiterate with what Mr. Fuji said. It's, I love seeing the tieback to the, to the profile and, and those skills that we're trying to, to build in, in our students. And this one is like always a special presentation for me. Like reminds me of 14 years ago, it was my first introduction to this district, the early learning center, when my daughter needed to start. And they absolutely blew me away. That was the point where I knew the moment was right for my kids, so I just, I love seeing this.
Good, well, I'm happy that I got to share. Anything else?
Andy, how many students are we serving in that building at this point?
Um, I wanna say, I just saw the numbers yesterday. I wanna say it's like, um, I wanna say there's a roughly, and again, I'm, this is not completely accurate. There's like 70 maybe-ish in the morning and 70-ish in the afternoon. Um, and we are doing, um, peer models, eight peer, or, um, and Ross might know the exact numbers, but am I correct? I'm, I'm.
As far as visibility, it's right around 65.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and so we try to do it, um, eight peers versus eight students with special needs. Um, obviously sometimes that doesn't always happen with move-ins, move-outs. And sometimes peers also, our teachers are able to quickly identify that they might need some sort of IEP as well. So, um, but yes.
And as a reminder, one of the things that, and I know Ross is watching closely because we try to keep it as tight as we can, we have to leave openings for kids who turn, it's so unique compared to our other programming because you don't have a kindergartner start mid-year when you're 25. And so we are required to service our students with special needs at age three, and so we have that spot for them. So, um, we work with the county, the public grow, some of those other, um, opportunities to kind of identify those kids. And that way we know, oh, we have all these kids that are turning three in January or March. And so we have to have a spot for them. And then we have to have here to balance them. So there are a lot of legal requirements there. So we don't always run those, and especially at the beginning of the year and first semester, those classes are a little smaller because they're legally grown. We have had to, um, add units sometimes when we've had a big influx, but we try to set, set ourselves up at the beginning of the year where, you know, we are too small a class and we don't have room and each one of them can act it. Anything else on early learning center? Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. So that is all I have this morning unless anyone has anything else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy, you're up.
Alright, so just wanted to share with the board that, uh, recently received that our, our audit has finished. So that's always a, a happy time in, uh, the finance office. And what's even, even happier is when it's a, a good and clean audit. So the, kind of the last step, um, as we finish things up is to see if the board would like a post-audit, uh, conference. And, uh, I know I reached out to some board members, but just wanted to check with the board if that would be something that would be helpful, um, for you. Uh, most likely we're looking at January, so I know that there will be new board members. And if that would be a helpful process or conversation for, for that group.
First, my congratulations completing an audit during this moment in history. Probably pretty impressive, given the fact that there were also no, uh, findings per se. Having only been on the board for two years now, I would find a conversation of that kind of post-audit report, uh, to be beneficial. And I think having it maybe in a work session, if it were to be the 13th or another date, would be helpful from the perspective of being able to share that out. Um, here's all of the things that kind of go into it. The, the look of expenses, the look of, uh, approval process. I mean, there's a serious number of, uh, qualifications that you and your department run through in terms of getting that done. Uh, and to be able to do so without any knocks against or tick marks or areas of growth is really impressive. Uh, so it would, it would, I think, be helpful, at least for me as somebody who's been here for two years.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm likely the, the most familiar with the audit process, but not in, you know, the, the education thing, so. But, but I definitely think that, you know, it, it would be educational, so open to, you know, open to that if everyone else is interested.
Couldn't hurt.
Were there any things that you found to be interesting that, that were highlighted?
Um, you know, with, with no comments, really, there, there were not. Nothing of concern, nothing was brought to us. Uh, I will say that the, the federal funds this year, just kind of working through some of the pieces and making the, the ESAR funds, uh, with those come additional steps and reportings and things like that. So just making sure that we've done that. Um, you may recall over the years that, uh, we've, we've, uh, well, actually probably only a couple of board members recall this, but, uh, procurement laws have changed at the federal level as well. So again, that's another step that just make. So again, that's another step that just making sure that we're watching that and, and doing it accordingly. Um, but because I think we've been trying to do our proactive steps, fortunately, there, there's, there can always be something. I mean, we're a, we're a large business, so. But always happy that, uh, that we are, it's a validation that what we're doing every day is, is, uh, keeping things good and clean. I will, I will work on scheduling that.
I know seven years, I think it was seven, you know, we didn't want, uh, as the board, not that we had to, it was just, hey, what's the audit process like? So it was just helpful for understanding that. I don't know that I'd want to do one every year, but it was.
It was good, uh, it was good in for a background and kind of how they do what they do and how it relates to what we do and comparisons to what they see in other places too. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, so that brings us to board members' items of interest, and, uh, Sherry, I'll start with you.
Um, first, I want to just give special thanks to all of the teachers, aides, and the rest of the staff and administrative team that have been working so hard to prepare for the move. In addition to ensuring that student needs are met, a regular day-to-day is happening. I know that there's a ton of excitement around the move and, and I'm sure there's a lot of community members that are anxious to see the finished product and attend events at the new facilities, and I know I am. But I think we all realize that this wouldn't be possible without a tremendous amount of time and energy. Just wanna let all those people working so hard know that your efforts are seen and are greatly appreciated. And then, on a different note, uh, last month in my comments, I mentioned how, um, civil society exists based on trust. Kind of a fragile balance between personal freedoms and the common good. And in light of the November 30th school shooting, I just wanna emphasize that point again. Anyone who has been responsible for a large group of people, uh, for any amount of time can tell you that taking away any individual's freedoms is not the goal or desire. And in a world that seems to have decided that only two extremes exist, I think it would do everyone some good to just remember that there are a lot of points of compromise in between any two extremes. Our society has gotten away, uh, a little bit from the concept of working together for the common good so that each party can come away with met needs. And I just think we can accomplish so much more when we listen to each other, when we respect each other's concerns, and when we find common ground in determining how to move forward when we're faced with adversity. When we effectively communicate, when we collaborate, we can accomplish so many things. That's all I have.
Thank you. Doug, how about for you?
Thanks.
Steve?
Um, a couple of notes. First, actually, I had it already prepared, but congratulations to Mr. Buzzkirk in the department, uh, for the completion of the audit. Certainly time-consuming, certainly, uh, kind of laying everything out to bear and having the opportunity to have those results come back. I look forward to the, uh, chance to hear about what was learned through the process. Uh, second, I know we have a couple of action items tonight or discussion topics today, uh, that we normally reserve for an evening meeting. But it's important maybe to recognize the fact that, uh, these items come to us with a significant amount of work. So I too wanna, uh, particularly again, my appreciation to the teachers. I understand that a tentative agreement has been reached, uh, that will be, uh, coming before us, and the idea of a conservative 2% increase in salaries, uh, is, I think, a very conservative increase and I think very, uh, appropriate for this time and space. Really wanna articulate my appreciation to everyone who was involved in that as it brings something to bear for the betterment of the organization and, uh, is maybe not, or is indicative of the time that they've been through, recognizing all of the things that teachers have had to pivot towards. Additionally, I wanna, uh, share that we've certainly heard much noise around, uh, the world of education today relative to transportation. Yesterday's dispatch, it talked about three districts in the central Ohio area, uh, that have had to cancel classes or, uh, create adjusted schedules due to transportation and bus drivers. So I wanted to take a moment and just give my appreciation directly to our bus drivers, uh, that do this work on a day-to-day basis. We've talked often about specific bus drivers or the opportunities for families to thank bus drivers. Uh, but I'm really proud of, uh, our fleet, our staff in particular, uh, that we've been able to, uh, have school, that we've been able to do so, uh, not just this year, but last year as well. We've been able to do so with, uh, uh, transportation for children. Certainly a lot of noise has been made relative to certain rules that exist on buses. Uh, but at the end of the day, a qualified, compassionate, professional adult driving that bus to get our kids safely to school is critical. And I'm proud of our, uh, drivers, our staff, and everyone involved in making sure that our students arrive safely. So thank you to them.
Thanks, Steve. Leanna, anything for you?
My only thing is kind of related to House Bill 290, which is the voucher backpack bill. I've been reading with interest and, um, quite frankly, a little bit of concern about this bill potentially moving forward and its ability to divert tax dollars from public schools to charter and private schools that are not accountable to taxpayers. And, um, have noted that there have been a number of districts around the state who have, um, adopted resolutions in opposition to HB 290 and just would like to consider moving forward with, um, that type of resolution, which I'm willing to work on something. There's a lot of examples out there. I've seen lists of, there's probably at least, I don't even know, um, how many at this point, probably potentially numbering in the hundreds of districts that have done this, um, and would like to kind of encourage this board to move forward with, um, voicing our opposition. I think with the current fair funding system, the fact that we know that that may be in place for a maximum of two years and, and we know that even for our district, the fair part of that, um, just the economic impacts that that bill could potentially have to public education is very concerning to me, so.
Do you want a resolution if the board is interested in having something on next week?
I would be interested in considering it. Thank you. And I will pass for today as well. That brings us to item 10, public participation. The meeting of Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business is not considered a public community meeting. Is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference the criteria of public participation. Jeremy, do we have anybody scheduled?
Not received any email.
All right. It's been a long time since we've had that, so, um, we normally would offer the opportunity for anybody unscheduled, if you wanted to pop up for three minutes, kind of the same process if anybody couldn't submit, but has an interest. Seeing no takers, we'll move to business items. Item 11-1, it's recommended the board approve the resolution to amend the cafeteria plan effective January 1, 2022. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Sherry.
So just quick comments on this, what this is. Back, it's about a year ago, there was, uh, the CAA, which was a federal package that, uh, allowed for amending our plan to be able to extend, uh, the amount of, um, FSA or flexible spending account dollars that could be rolled into future years. Um, recommending this, there are, I've, I've been reached out to by some employees that they were impacted during the, um, the pandemic, not being able to get different procedures or use their FSA dollars. So, um, we are a little bit late in, in the year in doing, and that's why not only am I recommending rolling, being able to roll those dollars from the 20 to 21, but also the 21 to 22, which are all allowable within, um, the amendments that are allowed. Um, and just a reminder, FSA dollars are employee dollars, so that's why I think it's, it's right to be able to allow that for them. That's kind of the gist of what this amendment is.
And the idea is that because health organizations kind of shut down knee replacements or carpal tunnel surgeries or these types of things unbeknownst to our employees, they weren't able to maybe have some of those quote-unquote elective procedures done. And because of that, they're, they have money that might be going to waste if they were.
That is correct. And, and generally the way that FSAs are, is there's a max that you can carry over, but it's more so sometimes a, a user lose it. Um, and, and you will, just another comment on this, you will maybe notice that it is a temporary, and that's the way that it, it currently stands in law, that this is a temporary allowability. Um, and, and also recommending that, that it, what is in this resolution is allowing for that temporary.
And the financial impact of the district is, I think I know the answer to this, but.
It, it is nothing to us.
Zero. So really what it is, is an opportunity for us to, to, again, allow our employees to have access to their funds.
That is correct.
Anything else for Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 11-2, it's recommended the board approve the resolution approving change order 116 to the construction manager risk agreement for the new high school with athletic improvements and new elementary school on a continuous site project. Can I have a motion, please?
Same.
Thanks, Sherry. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Good morning. Um, I'm also hurting, no coffee and cold, so hey. Um, so this is that resolution we've been speaking of for a while against the DDOC per board policy because it's greater than 50,000. Uh, myself, the treasurer and the superintendent have to sign off and make recommendation of the board, and the board has to take action, uh, to finally sign it. So that's what this resolution is doing tonight for this DDOC. Just to remind you, it's to remove the baseball, softball, and football scoreboards from our project budget or from Gilbane scope. Uh, those now are within a contract that's held between our AD and the marketing companies. So in other words, the boards were supplied by an alternative source. So we're getting a full credit back to the project is what's happening. Um, so I'll stop there.
Anything for Doug?
Just to point out, that'd be a contract to the district and the companies that the AD has facilitated. I didn't want to imply like, uh, Brian specifically held that contract.
Correct.
When you're ready, Jeremy.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item 11-3, it's recommended the board approve the resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing contract with the Obane Building Company for existing high school renovation product based on urgent necessity. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
So this is one of three tonight that are a change from last board meeting in terms of the nature of how the resolution had to be written. This one is with Gilbane, and it's still a given consti- constraint. And sent an email last night, sorry for the late notice. Unfortunately, lots of things change, as Mr. Crowley even noted, things can change daily, and unfortunately, that can be our world. Um, for this, again, the model we followed to get us here, just to remind you, is using the CM at Risk delivery model. And that allows a GMP or, um, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to that contract. That contract is specific to the new elementary, the new high school, site athletics. Where we thought we had an opportunity, uh, until very recently, was that we had an opportunity through our contract language, uh, to be able to use that same contract as a delivery model for the existing high school and the scope there. So I wanna stress, the scope is not an issue. It's the location of the project that we no longer have a tether or tie between our CM contract with Gilbane and the work at hand or the project location at hand. Not the scope, the location is our challenge. The money can follow, the contract cannot. And therein lies our issue. Um, along with that, I guess I'll just share, this was, not that it matters, but just some background. Again, this is a delivery model up until this point. Uh, again, a CM at Risk, we as a district have used for over $90 million worth of contracts to bid and deliver. State of Ohio has used it for hundreds of billions. Ohio State uses it, every university, every public school at times is used it at times. So it's a very accepted legal unto itself and best practice within the state of Ohio and throughout the country. But we can no longer utilize it as a standalone tool or instrument toward this contract. So I'm recommending the instrument in terms of the, the way we got the number to still stand, but in order to do that, we have to do urgent necessity to recognize that or allow us to move forward. They would no longer serve as our J- CM, just to share. They would be our general trades contractor, and it would be a single contract where they would hold all the other contracts. So similar model, all the other language would follow, but the, the term CM would no longer exist in the final contract. They would become a general trades contractor, performing essentially the same role, managing all the subs, managing the pay apps, managing all that. But everybody would be below them, just as they are now in the delivery model. So I'll stop, it was for a total of 839,994, just to remind you. And as we talked last time, that was within the budget, um, and I'll stop there.
Could, could I just add in in terms of the timing and the urgent necessity, uh, with the supply chain issues and labor issues that you speak to? Why is this urgent and we need to move over now? It's a ramification issue, right?
Correct. So we could do a hard stop and say, let's go to alternative delivery model. Um, the traditional one would be we'd ramp up with our architect, add some, amend their contract, do a full bid package, and go out on the street. Best case, just talking to the team at this given juncture, where we're at, we'd be looking at April till, or in best case, late March or April. Um, none of the project would be deliverable. So really, that's, I don't wanna say we're stuck or in a hard spot, but we're in a hard spot for actually, well, three of these contracts in terms of the board wishes to have them completed per the current schedule. In this case, this work needs to be completed before the middle school students move into an existing high school. This is our avenue to do it. There is no Plan B, so to speak, that would allow the schedule to occur. There are alternative methods, but they would not adhere to the schedule anymore and/or the budget potential.
So completion by August 2022.
Correct. So for the 22, 23 school year, yes.
And there's a statement in this contract, or in this proposal that says you believe the idea to be competitive. Can you speak about?
Yes, that's probably alluding to the fact that we have competitively had projects bid through the CM. We're still using the same delivery model. We just can no longer legally on its own use that delivery model. So again, the way this delivery model works, the CM goes out, solicits bids. Instead of us soliciting public bids, they solicit bids and bring those back to us. So it's still an acceptable way to solicit numbers.
And, and my question was poorly worded, and, and I, what I meant was, and you believe it to be competitive in terms of, this is appropriate.
I still stand very solidly behind the delivery model. It's just now we have a gap. And I honor that model in its contract form. I'm recommending for all three, actually, we honor that process, but urgent necessities where attorneys say we have to do in order to utilize that delivery model.
And if I'm hearing you right, in essence, what you're asking is to basically re-establish what's already been in place and has been being executed.
Correct. Specific to Gilbane, yes.
Anything else for Doug?
Okay.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Crowe? Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item 11-4, it's recommended the board approve the resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing contract with Train Incorporated for chiller replacement project at the existing Big Wallon High School based on an urgent necessity. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
So this is the second component for the existing high school. This is more of a maintenance issue. Replacing, we talked about last night, two of the older chillers and some pumps and other things associated with that. It has a, a similar but different fact pattern on how we've gotten to urgent necessity, but it's not discussed at the last board meeting. Both here and the Garland one, I'm gonna group them because of the same fact pattern. In order to use these, and we've used this contract delivery model as a district just last May.
I'm sorry, Doug, you, you're saying that you're going to group them in terms of you're gonna talk.
Only in the fact pattern of the disconnect.
Thank you.
Still talk about Garland, if that's okay. Um, all right, it's a, I, I'll continue. Sorry, sir. I understand what you're saying. Not grouping them for a vote, just grouping them for a fact pattern. So both of them are using what's called a, a council of governments contract delivery model. But for the district to be, we belong to a council of governments, so it's Meta. You'll hear Jeremy reference the fact we hire staff from there, we buy our electricity from there. We buy a lot of different things through this local cooperative, if you will. Through that local council of governments, they can then join any national cooperative purchasing group they would like. Only through them do we have the ability to use these other national cooperative purchasing contracts. That is what we did back in May when Train was hired in Garland for Phase One at Big Wallon Elementary, the roof and some rooftop units. Um, unfortunately, what has occurred, we were only informed last week, Meta no longer has a contractual relationship. They've let their membership lapse, is the easy answer. So our attorneys had to weigh in. They just discovered it in another district last week, and we were the second district, they informed. That unfortunately, Meta is looking at taking steps to reconnect themselves, but not till January. And so that is not fast enough for, again, to meet schedule, price increases and all that. So the simple answer is, our contractual way to use these contracts through Omni Partners. through Omni Partners has been untethered through Meta's laps and membership. And therefore, our only way to use another acceptable bidding procedure is for urgent necessity. So it's similar but different than the Garland one. Um but it has to do with the relationship. We need Meta to belong. They do not. Can't guarantee they will join in January, as the director has said, even if they did, price increases and schedules would no longer allow either project to be done before the start of school. So it's a similar fact pattern in terms of we're uh at the point we're at for different reasons outside of our control. But I'm recommending we move forward if the board wishes to complete both of these before the start of school. With an accepted delivery model put through urgent necessity. So specific to Train, isolating back to that. Again, that's for three ninety eight, six ninety eight, again, the two chillers and the pumps and the systems associated with those at the existing high school. Stepping back to that same fact pattern, but it's a different project, of course, and different location.
So the idea here is the relationship we have with Meta, Meta dropped the ball in terms of these two specific organizations, and because of that, we have to use a different bidding process in order to continue to use them to our project.
Correct. The resolution has language in the third paragraph where essentially we've added, we're recognizing the Omni Partners bidding. But again, we cannot, we can't not use that contract, so to speak. So similar to the other one, I'm saying that the process through the C M was an acceptable bidding process. We no longer have legal means to formally recognize that outside of urgent necessity. The same is true here. I'm saying it's an acceptable bidding process. We have good bids, and the end is unit prices we get. We want to model ourselves on that, but we can't formally recognize that or utilize that contract tool without urgent necessity.
And so the urgent necessity in this moment is, we could stand to wait and allow Meta to repair the relationship or have something else happen in, let's say, January and roll the dice that these two organizations then partner backup.
Correct.
Or we do this so that we have what we need in August under our control.
Correct. Plus, the priority now from Train, they're telling whether their price would go up twenty thousand dollars after January first. So there's price increase, and also Train specifically has been the one quickest to get back to me, can no longer guarantee a hundred percent. Theirs, theirs is already twenty to twenty two weeks out. Um so even if we order it this week or next week, we're still going to struggle to get it done before school starts as it stands now. And I just, well, I obviously have no control over what Meta's board does or doesn't do, assuming it's on their agenda, even if they voted yes. Both projects with specific to Train would no longer be viable for us to complete in time.
And again, just just to clarify, um I guess for the public, that all three of these projects have already been bid in a different manner. They've all scoped, the project had all, the budget had been worked out, and we were basically ready to pull the trigger on them, and we had seen them previously. We just have to go about it in a different manner now.
Correct.
And Sheri, that was a conversation I had with Doug yesterday, that that's my only concern about these is that I, when these came up on the agenda, I was like, wait a second. Why are we looking at it in this contract form? Because we've been talking about these for months and knowing that you've worked. And I appreciate the explanation you gave me yesterday and understanding, understand how frustrating this has to be for you coming back to us with what looks to be urgent necessity when there's been planning in place for these things to happen. So.
Thank you for clarifying that, because you definitely don't want it to look like you just thought of this yesterday.
And my my wonder is, when the Meta contract comes up, I like, how unique is this in 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 the world of Meta? Like, would we be the only ones that are finding ourselves in this situation, given their cooperative, or is this something that?
There was a second school, a a preceding school district that happened about a week earlier or was discovered, and that's how we kind of fell into that role. Uh Ma- Meta still believes they have a legacy relationship. Both organizations changed names.
Right, is, they're going to fight over here, but that still has.
They they believe we're standing on solid ground, but to reassure us, and all their members, they their their director said he wants to take action to rejoin, so that way this isn't an issue in the future.
And I just want to point out, we don't have, I think we do have E S C, we don't have employees through them, but we do.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes. Right.
And utilities, just to clarify.
Sorry about that. Yeah, a personal professional note, in twenty five years, uh this is the most urgent necessities I've had as an advocate. I haven't had that many in twenty four previous years. So yeah, Friday night was not a good night after having these multiple conversations with our attorney. Not a good day for me, but that's not about me. It's about moving forward for the kids.
Well, again, I just want to point out that I I don't feel that this is anything that Doug has done wrong or been negligent on, and I know he takes, bears a lot of um responsibility for it, which I appreciate. But I I just want to point out, I guess, as his supervisor, that I don't think he's dropped the ball.
Fine.
Well, I I heard, I heard a reference last board meeting. While I was not in attendance, I heard uh through listening to the broadcast about childbirth and the metaphor of metaphor of.
I'm still looking to lose it.
You're calling these labor pains, then?
I I, you know what, I'm not, I'm not privileged enough to speak on this stuff.
I'm not qualified either. I'm just asking, just asking if that's what you're calling. Anything else for Doug before we vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Item eleven five, it's recommended the board approve the resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing contract with the Garland Company Design Build Solutions for Phase Two, the Roofing Restoration Project at the Big One Elementary School based on urgent necessity. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I think I got Leanna and then Steve for a second.
So as the resolution says, this is phase two of the Big One Elementary. This is a permanent improvement uh funded, whereas the others were bond money, just to remind you. Uh this amount is six hundred and forty thousand, um same delivery model we used last May. Again, back to that fact pattern I just explained between Meta and Omni. We no longer have a contractual relationship because they've tethered temporarily, hopefully. Um therefore, we're forced to go to urgent necessity. Uh obviously, I'm recommending the same manufacturer, so we don't have warranty issues, all that good stuff as we complete that roof. Kind of the fact pattern, why we wouldn't want to stick with them as well. So I'll stop there.
Same comments before, just switch the names.
Correct.
Got it. There's nothing else on this particular contract?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Yes.
Crowe? Ms. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck with your delivery.
Sleep well.
Item twelve one, it's recommended the board approve the tentative agreement between the Big One Board of Education and the Big One Education Association effective July one, twenty twenty two through June thirty, twenty twenty five. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Angie, you want to talk of this one?
Yes, um this is a little earlier than we typically are able to get this done, but um we've shared with the board, we have all four of our labor contracts are now on the same cycle, which is
Unique.
good in some ways, because when we need to make sure we're able to do that, but also challenging from a timing standpoint. Um so with just all the craziness that's been going on, we really wanted to try to get this one secure, especially as um we've had, you know, just different financial challenges over the last couple of years. Um and as I'm sure you all know, but just for the inner public, our teachers are our largest expense. As a school district, we provide uh instruction to kids, and these are the people that do it. So this is by far the the largest part of our budget. And so for us to be able to secure that first, we like to do this one first, and then we will be working on our other three union contracts coming up here over the next few months. Uh want to thank our teachers. It's been a really tough couple of years for them. I know we talk continually about um, you know, Mr. Fuji just mentioned the bus drivers again and the shortages. I don't think I can really do justice to what the climate is like right now for our teachers in terms of nonviolence. Um we think about them having to cover classes daily, so we don't have enough subs. Um if people are out, whether it's just normal illnesses, open quarantine, whatever, um the other staffing doesn't have to pick up and cover their classes a lot of times, and we don't have enough subs. You know, one building, one elementary this week has a ten people that aren't covered. So when that happens, everybody is just basically not getting a break all day. And what that does then is their planned time is not really a break in the traditional sense of, you know, just sitting around and having coffee. It's time when they can plan their lessons and grade things. And so they're not having the time to do that always and having to do a lot more of that outside of the school day. So just want to continue to reiterate and um remind us all how fortunate we are, and everybody is really, really working hard to keep our doors open every day. There are a lot of days where, I mean, that that's a challenge. For instance, they're covering classes. I know I took a shift before Annie at the E L C. Um and it was when we were getting an infection and she was trying to change a diaper because there was nobody to do it. So um then she's like, well, are you, where's the principal? Are you the principal? She's like, I am, but I need to change this kid's diaper right now. So you know, everybody's just really doing a lot um within every category. And as we talk about the move coming up, also want to throw in our custodians who, they don't have enough subs. A lot of them are working double shifts and getting ready to have to do some weekend hours to help with the move. So for all of our unions, we just really appreciate all the extra work. I want to continue to thank them and draw attention to what's going on there, because I know a lot of you in your businesses have labor shortages as well. Everybody knows what that's like. We are not immune to it. It's going to probably get worse from what we're hearing, and so we want to continue to show our appreciation and thank our staff for all the hard work that they put in for our kids. And so with that, just really happy to be able to bring to you a recommendation today for a three-year contract with our teachers association. Certainly appreciate all their work from their leadership team to get this done, and the stability it provides in these crazy times as we move into the new year and uh hiring season comes up. And, you know, hopefully being able to retain our our talented staff. So. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
I just had one. Uh the title here is tentative agreement. Isn't it a suc- a successor agreement?
Well, I believe we are approving this tentative agreement because it hasn't been approved by the board yet. It would become the agreement then once the boards approved it and the the um, as you can see, it's already been signed by the uh the uh
Association.
the association. So it's tentative because it's not official yet.
Our vote would make it not tentative.
Correct.
So what's attached is a tentative agreement. So once you agree with those terms, then we'll write out the actual contract.
I think my uh comments or questions would be, first, the, again, what I believe to be a conservative rate of two percent on the base salary is is budgeted currently in the five-year forecast that was approved both in November and May. Is that correct, Jeremy?
That's correct.
So this is well within what we thought of as our spending budget for uh uh the district moving forward.
That's correct.
The second wonder, or second maybe statement of appreciation that I have is, this is also on the back of a significant amount of work over a period of years in terms of getting things right sized, uh not just with salary, but also with health insurance. And the health insurance component of this that staff moved to within the last two years is part of the reason that the salary now falls within lines of what would be appropriate guardrails. So thanks to all those that have been part of this through a number of years, but especially now, given the fact that uh we have some solid foundation to move forward on as we look at planning and and prep.
And and I think that's maybe a good point. I think maybe speaks to your, what you were asking, Mr. Crowe, is that the last contract negotiation period, as well as probably the last one, there were things that, language wise, or differentiating in opinions, uh financial things like Mr. Fuji just brought up for like insurance that we thought did need more discussing. Uh but we're we're at a point where really the fifty-some page contract that is the overall contract is, we both felt was in a good place, and really the only thing that was being discussed then is what, what is the salary piece going forward?
And with the insurance move on the last um contract, we were happy to be able to recommend a three-year contract just for a little bit more stability for us and them, depending on what's happening. Um helps us plan better, obviously, in terms of our budgets.
Well, thank you to Mr. Cooper, who I assume was uh very intimately involved in this, and I know is not with us this morning, so want to also.
He's covering for me at uh education day for the Delaware County, so.
So just wanted to also just mention his name and appreciation.
Yes, big thank you. This is, this is exciting to have this in place, really helpful for planning um purposes. And definitely a lot of, a lot of time and communication and collaboration going to this, all of that relationship building that makes this happen. So thanks to everyone in the team. Thanks to uh the Education Association for working together.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would just add is, um, you know, coming to the end of eight years, I would never say the the relationship was ever bad or strained, but when I look at how far we've come and the things that we've kind of worked on collectively over that eight-year timeframe, so I want to couch it and make sure, I'm not saying it was bad, right, but there's been a lot of challenging and complex issues that that um iterations of this board and administration have been able to work through over my time period. As I'm rolling off, this is a good one for me, or one of the good ones for me to to be able to to be able to do, and feel like at least we're we're in a good place with that relationship. So I thank you all for your efforts in that part, as well as our, as our union.
Okay. Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Item thirteen, schedule the next board meeting. We are on for December sixteenth, but please note, we are starting at seven P M. We're going to allow ourselves a little bit of time for the open house for the new facilities. So we'll be here starting at seven P M. Everything else will be exactly the same. Um item fourteen one, it's recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employer official. Consider matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes as well. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Whenever you're ready, Jeremy.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yeah.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Before we go into executive session, I know you always do a quick recess. Um typically, we do cake at the last board meeting, um when our board members are leaving the board. And I do plan on actually speaking and recognizing them next week uh during the board meeting, but I also know both of them very well now for several years, and I figured it would be a very difficult thing to try to do cake and make it about them that night um with the new high school opening and all refreshments and things over there. So we did want to take just a moment on our quick recess um for everybody to grab some continental breakfast, and then we have some pretty poinsettias back there for both Leanna and Brad to take home for the holidays, to make them think of all of us.
Just what they want to do.
My cats appreciate you. I'm sure they'll be all over them.
I'm not surprised you're a cat dad.
I'm a cat dad, dog dad, fish dad, you name it.
Might be poisonous to animals. You might want to put them in an area where the, where the animals can't get them, but um.
That's why I'm not in charge of the animals.
Wanted to uh just give you a little something vested there and would invite everybody to take a few moments and um thank both Brad and Leanna. And again, we'll, I'll be saying something a little more official next week, but wanted to take just an informal moment for people to have an opportunity to say thank you. Really appreciate all that you've done for our kids, our community, and personally, I appreciate everything you've done for me.
Thank you.
We can take a moment. I know we typically recess before executive. I'm kind of throwing that in there and taking that role from you to say that, but wanted to surprise you with that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.